Good evening. The time is now 7:09. I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting to order at this time. May we have a roll call, please?
All councilors are present.
Item two, pledge allegiance. May we all stand, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, special orders of the day.
We have a proclamation proclaiming May 7th through the 13th, 2017 as National Travel and Tourism Week.
Whereas travel has a positive effect on the state of Wisconsin, Rock County, the city of Beloit, and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, it also impacts business productivity and individual travelers' well-being. Whereas travel to and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than 2.3 trillion in economic output in 2016 with 990.3 billion spent directly by travelers. Whereas, travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 15.3 million jobs in 2016, including 8.6 million directly in the travel industry and 6.7 million in other industries. Whereas travelers spending directly generated the revenues of 157.8 billion for federal, state, and local government funds used to support essential services and programs. Whereas in Rock County, travelers directly spent 235.2 million, generated 384.3 million in business sales, provided a need for 4,053 travel-related jobs with a combined labor income of 96 million, and expended 28.4 million in local and state tax revenues in 2016. Whereas international travel to the United States is the nation's number-one services export. In 2016, travel generated 246 billion in exports, creating an 87 billion trade surplus for the United States. Whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments, which in turn boosts the United States economy. In 2016, domestic and international business travelers spent 307.2 billion. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers: health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. Whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth, creating jobs at a faster pace rate, faster rate than other sectors. Now, therefore, the city council, President of the Beloit City Council, does hereby proclaim May 7th through the 13th, 2017 as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Beloit, and urged the citizens of Beloit to join me in this special observance celebrating the work of Visit Beloit and of the travel industry in our community. Thank you. Now, Mr. Sankey Rafini to come forward.
That's okay. Good evening, Council President, councilors, and city staff. Thank you on behalf, my name's Celestino Rafini, I'm the Executive Director of Visit Beloit, and thank you on behalf of the more than 300 travel-related businesses in the Beloit area and state line region, our Visit Beloit Board of Directors, and as well the staff of Visit Beloit. This proclamation is much more than just Beloit, it's really, truly indicative of the efforts throughout this region, our strong partnerships with the Jamesville Area CVB and the Rockford Area CVB. What is mentioned in the proclamation is in 2014 to 2015, Rock County saw the third-highest increases in visitor expenditures, direct visitor expenditures, and in 2015 to 2016, we eclipsed that, and we had the second-highest percentage increase in direct visitor expenditures and total business sales related to the tourism industry. And the second-highest percentage of increase in any county across the state of Wisconsin is really remarkable considering the size of our county compared to many counterparts around the state. What's more impressive is the fact that the travel industry now gainfully employs 4,053 people in Rock County, and that is the third-highest percentage increase from 2015 to 2016. As many of you know, April 30th of this year began our 30th anniversary as a organization here in Beloit, and thanks to the city council in 1987 for putting their minds together and forming our organization. And across the board, we continued set records across all metrics, and really, our goal is to enhance quality of life in this community because quality of life attributes not only drive visitors to this area, but encourages people to consider this to be a home and place for them to work. And here in 2017, we're continuing to set a record pace and look forward to sharing those numbers with you in the future. So I appreciate your efforts in this proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item four, please.
Item 4A is a proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from R1A Single Family Residential District to C3 Community Commercial District for the property located at 3375 Prairie Avenue.
Ms. Christiansen.
3375 Prairie Avenue is a vacant two-acre parcel located immediately north of the YMCA Sports Complex. The applicant has made an accepted offer to purchase this property for future retail development. They're asking for the C3 zoning designation, which will, would allow a wide range of retail sales and service uses. If it was, if the rezoning is approved, they would be submitting a separate request for a convenience store with a drive-through component. Drive-through uses do require a conditional use permit in all commercial districts. We do not at this point have a site plan, architectural drawings, or anything like that. The property is located on a trail roadway that also serves as County Highway G. There are commercial uses and heavy commercial uses along this corridor, and the C3 uses are compatible with these land uses. Plan Commission reviewed this item on May 3rd and voted unanimously to recommend approval. All of you received an email, and maybe something in the mail, I received something in the mail, and an email from Cody Lanert and Amanda Perkins, who did not speak at Plan Commission, who live at 2015 Walton Lane, and they do have some concerns about having more commercial along Highway G or Prairie Avenue, and just concern about having a drive-through or alcohol or tobacco sales in the vicinity of their neighborhood. And if you haven't seen that already in an email, I mean, this is just on your agenda tonight for a public hearing, you're not taking action tonight, you do have an opportunity to read that before the next meeting. So this is on your agenda just for a public hearing tonight.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on item 4A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Second call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion from council to get this on the floor to discuss. Is there a motion to lay this over?
I'll make that motion. A second.
Motion by DeForest, second by Duncan. Any councilor comments? Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I know this is coming back to us.
Push the button.
I know this is coming back to us, but Ms. Christiansen, could you explain more about the landscape buffer that's going to exist between this property and the adjacent residential properties?
I don't know the actual width, but there is a landscape buffer required on commercial property that abuts residential, so we would ensure that there was some buffer there, not just the standard landscaping and the islands, but it would actually be a buffer between the two uses. And if you, if they do apply for a drive-through, you would get another opportunity to impose any other conditions that you think are necessary to ensure that it fits in with the adjacent residential land uses.
Okay, so at that time, we'll be able to be more prescriptive about what we'd like to see for the specific items in that buffer?
Yeah, at that point, we would tell you what the standard width is, and then if you wanted to do some additional materials, you could do that at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilor comments or questions? Seeing none at this time, it is motion and second to lay this over to our next...
Mr. President? Oh, you got it?
That was my clarification, just to lay it over. I wanted to make sure that was the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion and second to lay this over into our next scheduled meeting. All those in favor laying it over, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing non-passes, 7-0. Item five is public comments. We've reached a point in our agenda where citizens may come forward to speak. I have several sheets here. If you were unable to fill out a sheet, you can still come forward at this time. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. I will not cut you off, but give you a friendly reminder that you've approached that three-minute mark. We ask you to refrain from personal attacks on city staff and councilors. I will be honest and say if that does happen, then I will ask you to end your presentation immediately. At this time, our first speaker is Mayor Welch from the city of Milton, and he, she's accompanied by a couple of others, she's accompanied by a couple of other, Carrie and Anissa. I have two of them down here speaking on the same thing, so. Yeah.
Does this mean we get six minutes?
Sure. You can take six minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Anissa Welch, and this is Carrie Cleba, and thank you for allowing this, allowing us this time to speak. I usually am not on this side, so I want you all to know, it's a good opportunity and it's a humbling experience. So if you have the opportunity to go around to other municipalities and speak, I would highly recommend it. The other thing I'd like to say is congratulations on your citizen participation tonight. What an awesome crowd, and it's always nice to see our citizens participating in municipal government. We're here this evening to share with you some information on an event that we have coming up in the city of Milton, and it's very fitting tonight because you already had a short presentation and a proclamation on tourism and travel. This is a family-oriented event, it's a historical event, and it is free the entire weekend. And we would love to have all of you in the city of Beloit to come to the city of Milton and see what we have to offer at our Milton House, and I will turn this over to Carrie for the rest of the presentation.
Hello, city council. My name is Carrie Cleb. I'm Executive Director of the Milton House Museum and the Milton Historical Society in Milton. Brief history about the Milton House Museum, we are actually the last certified Underground Railroad station anywhere in Wisconsin. It's something we're very proud of, and it's also a story we seek to share with the greater community. We are the only national historic landmark in Rock County, and the Milton House actually shares a strong historical tie with Beloit because of the Underground Railroad. We are here specifically for the event Civil War Living History Days. So living history is usually the one that I get the blank faces on, but a living history day is a living reenactment. Whereas with many reenactments, what you picture is a performance in a field, very sterile, very observational. Living history is actually learning stations. These people, these reenactors actually come forward as though transported through time to interact with you, tell you about how they lived, tell you about what brought them to this point in history. I have to say, thanks to a grant from the Wisconsin Humanities Council, we've actually been able to engage more reenactors that will allow us to focus on a particular theme this year, and that year will be abolitionism and the enduring impact of slavery. Slavery's abolition, as you guys are aware, did not end its impact on our United States. Again, thanks to the Humanities Council, we are able to keep this as a free event. So on Friday, I am going to caution everybody, there will be about 2,300 local students descending upon Milton. We will have the largest standing army in Rock County, but no, a lot of, a lot of fun at that date, but we open up to the public in Friday evening, first with a Dinner with Lincoln, and then our programming on Saturday, which I'll actually leave behind here for you, features a lot of exciting and different interpretations on what brought us here. As you guys, I'm sure, are aware, the Civil War is truly the stage that set so many of the issues that we are dealing with today socially, politically, and economically, and I think this is a great starting place. We're trying to engender a discussion among us about how we got here and how proud we should be with how far we've come and how far we still have yet to go. So thank you so much for your time, and if you do have any questions about the event, I am here.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just, the date and times, is it only Friday, or is it Friday, Saturday?
May 19th is the scary school day, and then it's the 20th and the 21st. Actually, I brought invitations to pass out to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for having us. Thank you, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Rick Elliott, please.
Hello. My name's Rick Elliott. I'm representing Jackson Monument, I'm the owner of the company, and I'm here as a concerned citizen as well as business owner. The city of Beloit is taking steps towards selling columbariums, and columbariums are for cremations to be inured into. And my question is, why is the city, the government, competing against retail business and getting into the retail marketplace? It's not only myself that's concerned about this, but numerous other retailers in the area of monuments, cemetery memorials, who I've spoken to, as well as I'm a member of the Wisconsin Association of Monument Builders, who has a stand against something like this happening. You're competing on an unfair ground, you don't pay taxes as a municipality that the retailers would pay, and after 150 years in this community, I'm wondering why, you know, you would be doing this. I find it kind of ironic that we have a development, or a economic development group run by Andrew Yonkey in the city, yet we also are trying to undermine businesses at the other end of it. And concerned about it, I've been told it is not moving forward at this point, temporarily, apparently, but I find that kind of hard to believe because I have seen the delivery of one of the columbarium units to the cemetery office, and thought I'd bring it to the city's attention at this point.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I think I would, we have your address. If you can repeat your address for the record.
2222 Milwaukee Road.
Okay, then I think, I believe we have your phone number as well, and what I'll do is make sure that the city manager kind of gets this information and follow up with you if that would be satisfactory to you.
Yeah, because, you know, it's definitely something I've, as was stated in the Daily News, after Mr. Barth went through an article on it, I'm under the understanding government is here to protect us, not to compete against us, and you're getting into a marketplace that government shouldn't be into.
Okay. All right, I'll pass it on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Phil, come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Phil Wilson. I reside at 1035 Pleasant Street, apartment 3414. It's not the easiest thing for me to get up here and talk about what I'm going to talk about, but mental illness is something that is, one out of five people are struck with some type of mental disorder in their lifetime in the United States of America. That's 20%. That's a lot of people, and you don't hear much about mental illness until somebody goes out and bushwhacks a few people or something. Oh, he or she had a history of mental illness, but there's a lot of good people out there that have mental illnesses as well, and that's all I'll say about mental illness. But it usually isn't picked up until your early twenties, and that's when it was picked up for me. I'm bipolar, I talk about it rather prevalently to different people, and there's a stigma about mental illness. They've printed my articles in the Daily News and the Shapper over the last few years, and I'd like to see the stigma of mental illness go away in my lifetime. Cancer used to be a stigma, but it's, now it's dinner table talk. In fact, there's cures for cancer, and, or sometimes if it's not cured, it just doesn't get any worse or any better. And, and another thing that I want to talk about is, when I was about nine or 10 years old, my parents, my dad drank a lot of alcohol, and, but he was an excellent golfer at Warner Electric, one of the best ones that Warner Electric ever put through. But they were talking about divorce one night in bed, and I came downstairs about nine, 10 years old, and said, "You don't know what this is going to do to me if you two get a divorce." It was never mentioned past that point. It took a lot of courage on my part to do something like that at that age, and I'll also tell you, God hates divorce. He does. The pledge allegiance to the flag, we said it, under God, and I studied it greatly. I didn't get married till I was 35 years old, and I was going to be darn sure I wasn't going to have a child at that age, because it's just the way it was, and I wasn't able to speak in front of people like I am right now. I had to learn how to communicate in a pastoral office or a psychiatric office. It wasn't until probably 10 years ago that I'm able to do what I'm doing right now. I think Beloit's an excellent town. There's, there's a few people that come into town from Rockford and Chicago that like to raise heck and, and make it bad. But yesterday, for instance, I was sitting out at the park there by the lagoon, I was sitting on a chair, one, 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 one was, one, one, one was there for Charlie Tubbs, and, and had to do with being the chief up in Madison. And then the one, I started looking at the one I was sitting in, and here it was by George, Georgia, can't think of his last name, Townsend, and I know scratch marks all over this darn chair, and then I noticed it said "King" on it, and I tell you what, I was a kid once too, but I did not go out and destroy things like some of these kids are doing, and, and gangs are such, so prevalent. I'm telling you, if, if you're coming into Beloit and you want to raise heck, you can go back to Rockford or Chicago where you belong, because Beloit's a good town, I want to keep it a good town. Get it together.
Thank you, Phil. Rose Richard, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rose Richard. I live at 618 Church Street. So I have two things to say. The first is, I recently attended an NAACP meeting where four councilors were in attendance, so Counselor Levy, Counselor Duncan, and Councilors Blakely and Anderson. I want to thank you all for being there and sharing your goals and intentions for the next couple of years. It was very important to have you there, and very important that we all had such a great discussion about some issues facing the community and solutions. So I just want to talk about a couple and share with everyone what the solutions offered were. So one of them is a lack of diversity in some public departments. So for instance, the fire department, someone suggested forming a training program for young high school students so that, and offering this training program to a wide variety of people from different backgrounds, so that when there's an opening, we have a body of trained people ready and available, and also so that students get an idea and feel of what they can do, and also so that they feel welcome to participate in this way. Also, we talked about improving the appearance of neighborhoods. So one solution that was brought up would be creating a program for young people to mow and do minor repairs. Someone also suggested having skilled retirees have a mentoring program where they mentor young people so that they can be prepared to do these repairs, which I think is a great idea because it's not only solving a problem that we have, but it's bridging the gap between our older citizens and our younger, younger citizens, and also raising awareness of jobs that are offered to wide varieties of people. So not only, so finding ways to increase the awareness of jobs in neighborhoods that may not usually be notified. So this is a problem that I think we still need ideas to come and bring forth how we can do this and where we need to be posting job applications. And also, we talked about advocating ban the box on employee, city employee applications. So what this means is, if you are, if you have a prior conviction and you're filling out a job application, you'll have to mark in a box that you had a conviction, and this creates a barrier for people who are trying to re-enter back into society and make a life for themselves after prison or jail, and I think it would be a very big step for the city to ban the box so that more people are entering the job force. And one other idea I think would be great to help improve the appearance of neighborhoods would be to build more recreational facilities in neighborhoods that don't have them. So Merrill had a community center, and I think if we had a new recreational center in that neighborhood, I think that would be great to encourage more people to come into that neighborhood, and also to give people living there a place to go. And yeah, that's pretty much what I had. I also want to let everybody know that the end up, that the Equal Opportunities Commission will be having a community workshop on Saturday, May 20th, from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock at Riverside Park in the north end by the playground, and we're having this to brainstorm ways to raise awareness of our purpose, which is to end housing discrimination and hear housing discrimination complaints, but also to eliminate racism in Beloit. And we also want to generate community input on future projects. We think it's very important, before we start doing our own projects, to see what the community needs and to make sure that people know that we're a resource to come to if they have an idea on how to eliminate racism, or if they know of housing discrimination. We also want to make meaningful local connections with leaders in the community so that they can be resources to point them in our direction. So please come out and join us. There will be light refreshments and snacks, and it would be great to have everyone come out on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Tom Larson. Questions? I'm sorry.
I just have a...
Go ahead, next, I'm sorry.
Question.
Where is it, Rose?
It's at Riverside Park. There will be a tent put up, so look for the tent, it's in the north end, so it'll be near the playground at Riverside Park.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Larson, live in Beloit, 2303 North Street. I just came down, probably Johnny come lately or whatever, but I just thought I'd give you my remarks on the new logo. I don't like it. I hate it. I think we got so much other going on, the beautiful Hendrix building, the, you know, the redstone downtown, there's so much we have in Beloit, and I, I made a copy of that and I walked around just to ask people, said, "What is that? I don't know, is it the gantry? Is it a bridge? Is it, that's not Beloit." I know that you've probably spent a lot of money on it already, it's, I'm probably way too late, but I emailed a couple of the councilors, I said, "Come down and just tell you what I thought." I, I just don't know, I, I don't think it represents Beloit. It doesn't even look like anything that says Beloit, it just, you know, it kind of looks like a church symbol or something, which that's okay if that's what you're going for, but as far as what I'm seeing is, I don't know, I really like the flying bees, so I guess the gray hair gives you the flying bees, so that's outdated, but I think for the, the money, I think maybe we should look at it a little bit before we, you know, there's got to be, there's got to be something a little better out there, because I don't, I don't think it represents Beloit. We got so much going on in that little, a little figure over there. I mean, maybe looking at it on a sheet of paper, but on a truck as it's driving by, you know, that, that's not going to say Beloit, but that's just my opinion. I'm not an artist, and I'm, I'll tell you right now, I couldn't do any better. There's no way on earth I could do any better, because I'm not artistic at all, but I don't, I don't like it. Just thought I'd tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm also here to talk about the logo.
Let me just, if you can just give your name and address for the record, please.
Tracy Bliss, 2210 James Kelly Lane.
Thank you.
So I was born in Beloit, raised in Beloit, and now raising my three children here. I graduated from UW-Milwaukee in 2000 with a degree in graphic design. I've been in marketing for 17 years with an emphasis in graphic design. I worked for a time as a marketing coordinator, but have designed logos on my own time for businesses in the area such as Glitzengo and the downtown Dash logo for the Greater Beloit Chamber of Commerce in 2015. I currently volunteer my time on the Marketing and Brand Strategy Committee for United Way of Blackhawk Region. I don't speak very often, I'm a little shaky, sorry. I graduated from the Leadership Development Academy of Rock County in 2014 and now serve on the Board of Directors. I take great pride in community involvement and improvement, and it would be an honor to be a part of Beloit history by helping design a new logo. So with that, I'd like to offer my services as another option for the new Beloit logo at no charge, whether that be designing a new logo or working with the current artists to work with what we have. The proposed new logo, in my professional opinion, is lacking... The proposed new logo, in my professional opinion, is lacking contrast in color and elements that truly reflect what Beloit is all about. The word city of look out of place in the horizontal version and look out of place over the bridge and water. On the stacked version, the art still looks a little out of place to me. I honestly don't mind the fonts and their placement in the stacked version, but the bridge and water needs to change or be placed differently. Beloit is known for its people to work hard, play hard, and come together. So many times I've witnessed the community coming together to help people or, or organizations in need, and it's a beautiful thing to be a part of. This community always comes together when people need it. So I was hoping to bring some ideas. I got about three sketches done, but it just wasn't in my opinion ready to be shown to you. I apologize. I basically just had today, cause I found out about this opportunity last night and it was Mother's Day. Um, and I worked today, but I did some research on what I think, you know, are iconic, uh, images of Beloit. And I have six ideas that given one week, I would love to present these as options to you. Um, one, you know, the focus around the heart of Beloit, our beautiful downtown, where we see the city being rebuilt and brought back to life and people celebrating that. Where the farmer's market thrives and the community comes together for various events throughout the year. The skyline of the Phoenix comes to mind, or the gantry that I have already created artwork for with the downtown dash logo. Um, two, play off of the Maryland Houston's Ironworks industrial look and feel. For those of you that don't know, um, in eighteen fifty-eight, Orson E. Merrill came to Beloit and started a foundry on Third Street. And within a year, he took in a partner, George Houston, and the firm became known as Maryland Houston's Ironworks. Thirty years later, the company officially became the Beloit Corporation. So this is definitely an iconic foundry for our Beloit community. Third option would be the old water tower, um, built in eighteen eighty-five and then completed in eighteen eighty-nine to serve the city's water needs, particularly fire protection, was privately funded and built by local businessmen. Uh, number four, possibly a silhouette of Harry's Pavilion and maybe some music notes. This one would be a little playful. Um, again, the city's known to work hard, play hard, and come together. Or maybe there's no music, but maybe hands somehow reflecting how the community is always willing to come together with the tagline, believe in Beloit. Um, five, I think the, uh, Beloit flag, the imagery in the flag in itself, there's a lot of meaning in the flag. I won't read the entire paragraph. I think I'm running out of time, but the flag has elements that could be very good in that logo. And six, um, you know, the flying bee, there's no reason we couldn't, uh, present options of that just being updated. Um, a lot of big corporations do that. Pepsi-Cola, for example, just take the bee. And I think this is where we could possibly incorporate, uh, the river, in my opinion, with the waves of the water somehow. So within these six options, I would show the usage of the taglines, the gateway to Wisconsin or believe in Beloit, whichever, you know, um, depending on the art. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My portfolio can be seen on LinkedIn, sorry. I wish I would have, I just didn't have enough time. My portfolio can be seen on LinkedIn or Facebook. I have a, I, I was doing freelance, so it's at Decory Design, D E capital C O R I, design. My main name's Decory. And when I was freelancing, before I have three-year-old twins, um, I don't have much time now to freelance. I took away my website and just have Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the, the papers I have for citizens' participation, but if there are anyone else willing to speak under citizens' participation this evening, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening to everyone. Um, I'm George Williams and I reside at twenty-one seventy Hayfield Lane. And there are a couple of topics I'd like to talk, uh, just mention a couple of things tonight. And I want you to know my words are not meant to be a, a criticism, but more of a concerned citizen. So in nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, my wife and I moved to Beloit. And we could have moved to Madison, we could have moved to Rockford, we could have moved to different places. I came here because of Beloit College. And we found Beloit to be a very significant community and we're very happy here. Also, we've known that there have been a lot of businesses coming to Beloit. And also I've known that many people who, uh, hired these businesses don't actually live in Beloit. So this has been a concern, I think, that many citizens share. And so what I like to do is encourage the city council to think of ways in which how we can bring not only new businesses, but encourage people to live in our community, whether they be incentives, whether it be presentations to companies, or what have you. I know all of you are very creative people, and if you get your minds together, which I'm sure you have, um, that's something that we like to do. I mean, that's something I think a lot of citizens of Beloit would like to, like to see happen. So we would just want to encourage you to do that. The other thing is that it's been brought to my attention that pretty soon we'll probably be hiring a lot of, um, fire department members and police. And currently right now, and I, again, I, this is more of a concerned citizen, not, not less of a, a critique, but it doesn't seem like the departments reflect the city of Beloit. City of Beloit is a very diverse community and that's one of the things that we respond to and we, and one of the reasons why we remain here with our two children. And so we would like to see the, the fire department and the police department to reflect that. And I think that one of the ways you can begin that is in job descriptions. Often times there's hidden language in, in job descriptions. So I'd like to encourage all of you to start thinking about that, and I'm sure you have, about your job description and the process of hiring a, a fire department and a, and a police department that reflects the community, because then there, there's more community engagement when the community sees people in those positions that look like them. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' participation? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Sean Levy, twenty-seventy-four Cobblestone Court. Uh, Kevin Levy is not my father. Uh, Kevin Levy is my cousin. His father-
I do get that question a lot, so that's why he wanted to-
His father and my father are brothers. Uh, I am a professional educator. Uh, I have worked in the school district of Beloit. I currently do not work in the school district of Beloit. Uh, my wife and I are both graduates of Beloit Memorial. I graduated in nineteen ninety-five, she graduated in nineteen ninety-six. Um, most, we have two children, uh, eight-year-old and a six-year-old. And most recently, I have been involved in the School District of Beloit's Ad-Hoc Diversity Committee. Uh, we looked at the diversity that represents our school district and also in our city. And one of the things that we identified is how our staff in the school district did not represent the diversity of the children that are being served. Uh, listening here tonight, I, I was coming tonight just to listen and then I decided I would speak, uh, started by our neighbors from Milton and their presentation about the Underground Railroad and slavery. And then listening to our other citizens speak on topics that are very important and tie all of us together, uh, in Beloit. I don't like the logo also. Uh, that wasn't my primary thing, but I think what, uh, touched me in listening to the other citizens speak was how they felt that it did not tell the story of Beloit. Uh, and, uh, my grandfather, uh, his father and his brothers worked at Fairbanks Morris. And the history of Beloit, or, uh, many of the black people in Beloit is that we came here as workers and in the past hundred years, many of us have become educated, the children of workers have now been educated. Um, and we're at a place of myself, example of my wife and myself, where we have graduated from Beloit Memorial, uh, have obtained advanced degrees. And you come back to a home and we've been in big places like Columbus, Ohio, and you just want to see a little more progress. Beloit has made great progress, but you want to continue to see different things. Um, so I am with great interest as a citizen, just following, uh, the hiring practices of the city, the same as I did in the school district. So that's something that I'm watching as I know that there will be some changes and some issues that will come up in the future. Uh, and my concern for that is just that Beloit continues to be a great place to raise your children. Um, and also this weekend, I went to a birthday party with my son and daughter. Uh, they are participants in the dual-language immersion program, uh, at Todd Elementary School. So I went to a party and I was the only black person at the party. It was all Hispanic, uh, Mexican-American students, uh, family members. Uh, yo, um, I don't know a lot of Spanish, yo say muchas palabras, pero no sé muchas frases. Uh, pero yo trato, I try. And so, uh, as I sat with that family, uh, from three o'clock to eight o'clock, cause the kids were playing soccer and enjoying themselves, I was welcomed. And that's a reflection of how Beloit is changing. Because even when I graduated from Beloit Memorial nineteen ninety-five, there were not many Hispanic families. And between nineteen ninety-five and when I came back to Beloit in two thousand six, that, that was a change. And as me and those parents, uh, my children's friends that invited us into their home and showed us warmth, um, and friendship, those are things that we talked about, what was my experience of Beloit, what was their experience of Beloit? Good Christian people. Um, as I met with that family and we talked about different things. So that is my hope as a citizen, as I engage, uh, and come to speak at these meetings, uh, that we will continue to make Beloit a place for all people and have symbols that reflect who we are and actually tell that story accurately.
Thanks, son. All right, anyone else wishing to speak, uh, this evening for citizens' participation? Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Tyree Gamine, twenty-twenty-one East Ridge Road. Uh, I'm a senior attending Beloit Memorial High School and, um, I just wanted to make some suggestions of what I think could be nice for the city. Cause growing up in Beloit is very diverse and, uh, I love it here. But there aren't a lot of jobs for teenagers and there aren't a lot of things for us teenagers to do, so I was wondering if maybe we could figure out a way to get some of the students together or parents or something and figure out some ways to open up some recreational centers for the, for the younger kids so they can stay out the streets and create some jobs for us to go out here and make some money. And then also in the school, we should probably get some air conditioning. It's getting pretty hot. And then, um, I had something else, but I'm gonna just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Williams and I reside at twenty-one seventy Hayfield Lane. Uh, thank you again for continuing to have citizen participation and making open comments. I, uh, I do appreciate that you have this opportunity for us. I had no intention of speaking today, I too like, uh, Mr. Sean Levy. I was just coming to observe the, the meeting today. But I too agree that the logo, um, is not acceptable, which again, a lot of other people have, uh, vocal, vocalized, both here tonight as well out in the public. I've seen emails, all kinds of things going on in the public paper and various other means. Um, I was encouraged when the gentleman, as well as the lady, came forth and offered their services. Um, but I would remind you, like the gentleman that just spoke before me, the high school student, he made a suggestion about jobs for teenagers. And if you listen, he didn't say you create it by yourself. He mentioned about a community coming together that includes young people. And I would say the same thing about the city of Beloit logo. It seems to only speak to a certain community. It does not, in my opinion, um, embrace the welcoming, uh, diversity of this city. Uh, Beloit has a sign over a bridge when you cross, uh, the state line from Illinois. Welcome to the gateway of Wisconsin. Uh, I do not see that reflective in the logo. There is a bridge somewhere in there, is, I think, but it does not reflect Beloit. So I would ask you to consider bringing diverse voices. The, the lady that spoke, I think her offer is great, but there are a lot of different individuals in this community who have skills and they need to come to the table, uh, to try to improve upon what you've already done. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens', uh, participation or public comment this evening? Second call, anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak under public comment? Seeing none, ever closed that portion of the agenda and moved to item six, was it consent agenda?
All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Is there any council, uh, counselor, like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, uh, the consent agenda will consist of items six A through six E. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by, for, is there a second? Second by Duncan, uh, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda consisting of items six A through six E, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing now passes. Item seven, licenses, and before we go to that, I'll, um, yield to Attorney Krieger, please.
I just want to let the record reflect that I'm going to recuse myself from the deas here. Attorney Bill Henderson has been hired to provide you any advice on this matter since my office is involved in helping the police department, um, essentially prosecute this offense or the, the license application. Um, I just wanted to make that clear and then invite Mr. Henderson up here and I'll step up.
And while we're making the change, um, this, Madam Clerk, can you read the-
Yes. Seven A is a resolution approving a Class B beer and Class B reserve intoxicating liquor license for H R N S V Entertainment LLC, doing business as addiction. At thirteen-ten Cranston Road, Eduardo Garrido Mateos, agent.
Hey, and it's gonna be by Chief and, uh, Attorney Bruce. But go ahead.
Yes, and I am not your son either. Good evening, councilors. Um, Police Department agrees, concurs with the recommendation of the ABLCC regarding the denial of the license for Club Addiction. I'd like to provide you some background on that. Back in twenty thirteen, the city council suspended Club Addiction's liquor license for ninety days as a result of their failure to maintain records for their purchase and use of alcohol. Uh, during that particular incident, over three hundred bottles of alcohol that were illegally in the premise were confiscated by the Department of Revenue, Alcohol and Tobacco Enforcement. From there, we jumped to twenty fifteen where their license was revoked for a series of violations. Council heard seven hours of extensive testimony from police department personnel regarding the numerous occasions that the police department had to respond to the club in order to make arrests and maintain peace and order. On many occasions, patrons were intoxicated, violent, disorderly, and underage. The most severe instance culminated on July thirty-first, when three individuals were shot in our community after an event at Club Addiction. Pending application before you tonight is their second attempt to regain their liquor license. Uh, back in February of this year, they applied and the day before the hearing of the Alcohol, Beer and Liquor Committee, they withdrew their application. They reapplied and are now before you tonight for consideration. This new application contains nothing new and nothing meaningful in terms of changing their circumstances. The same president and vice president, Julian Valencia and Afren Valencia are both still in place. At the ABLCC meeting, we learned that a new person, Lilia Wrangle, was to be the business manager. And during her testimony, we learned that she's actually a close friend of Julian Valencia, has no experience running any licensed establishment or business, and has a background in education. Uh, also she was, uh, able to offer no information whatsoever as to how she would, as business manager, change the culture or the, uh, conduct of this establishment, which has been from the beginning, one in which they continually disregard the law and show great apathy for the safety of our community. The same agent is in place, Eduardo Garrido. He was the same agent who's been in place since January of twenty fourteen, when the vast majority of these violations have occurred. And although he represents that he will be present at the club all hours, all days to supervise and that this, things will be different, it was learned at the ABLCC meeting that Mr. Garrido has no legal means to get from his house in Janesville to Beloit, and he testified that he would probably ride with the bartenders. I have little confidence that Mr. Garrido will provide adequate supervision riding with the bartenders or at a moment's notice when an incident occurs at the club. As I have little confidence that Ms. Wrangle, while a very nice individual, will have any ability to properly manage, either from an experience and from the relationship aspect, the goings-on that have occurred at Club Addiction in the past. From June thirteenth to November thirtieth of twenty fifteen, the police department responded to seventy-eight calls for service at Club Addiction. Seventeen, I'm sorry, nineteen of those constituted reportable calls for service and actually in which criminal activity, uh, was involved. We had to make arrests, investigations occurred, everything from disturbances, warrant service, vandalism, disorderly conduct, battery, and then again, the three persons who were shot on July thirty-first. As all of us know, the personnel strength of the police department is not robust and insatiable, and if we have to send multiple, up to many of instances, five officers to one location in the city of Beloit, we're tied up for hours on an investigation or to bring order to chaos, our resources are tapped, the rest of our city is not adequately protected, and we're also spending a lot of money underfilling positions so that we can respond to calls for service. Since the revocation of the license, the police department has had five calls for service, none of which constituted a reportable call for service. So we have gone from seventy-eight to zero. The department no longer needs to respond there on the typical Friday or Saturday night in order to make chaos, to make order out of the chaos that has been caused by their intoxicated, disorderly, and violent patrons. The loss of the liquor license has also positively affected the community around it. In February of this year, the department, leading up to their last application, conducted a neighborhood canvas of both businesses and residences immediately surrounding Club Addiction. Seventeen businesses and thirteen residential units were contacted in total. Twenty-nine out of thirty respondents were against Club Addiction receiving a liquor license for all of the reasons mentioned. The businesses commented on many occasions how it adversely affected their ability to conduct business at night, the effects on the safety of the environment to their patrons, and the residents also felt the disruptions in the middle of the night with the patrons, the disorderly conduct, the shots being fired, et cetera. So twenty-nine out of thirty respondents were also in favor of the liquor license not being reissued. Club Addiction has a pattern of behavior, and we can go back through their history, and it was brought up during the seven-hour testimony last year, or in two thousand and fifteen, rather, that each time they were called upon to answer questions as to what they were doing and why these things were occurring, they often responded that they just didn't understand the laws, and they would promise to do better in the future. Yet they've done nothing to change that perspective. In fact, one week after three people were shot in our community because of the event that was improperly hosted by them, their inability to have licensed Wisconsin security guards on scene, to this day, we don't even know who all those people were, because after the shooting on July thirty-first, the owners and operators refused to return our calls, refused to meet with us. It was very difficult obtaining any information from them whatsoever. But yet, in their pattern of behavior, they'll always say they don't understand and they'll do better. Well, a week after the shooting on July thirty-first, they held another event. In anticipation of what was to come, the police department geared up with additional resources. We were there when the event started, only to find that the tavern was filled with underage people, which they weren't licensed to have, and that no one behind the bar was licensed to serve liquor. So the folks that didn't understand the law, one of the promoters that they hired approached one of our officers and said, "Hey, according to the statutes, if, you know, someone's underage and they're part of the entertainment, they can be on the premise." That was quickly disproved after a couple of interviews with the crowd, who said, "Hey, we're just here to come to the event. We're not part of the entertainment." So the folks that don't understand the law tried to use it to their advantage. Again, this is repetitive behavior on their part, and certainly a disqualifier for any applicant to obtain a liquor license. I would remind the council that it can lawfully recommend denial if it determines that there is a rational connection between the denial of the license and a positive effect on the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the committee. And I would argue strongly that there is more than a rational connection. There is a statistical connection, seventy-eight to zero, and there is a felt connection in our community, contacting seventeen businesses and thirteen residents who live and are affected by the activities of this club on a regular basis. So there is a strong connection in many ways that lead to a, in my opinion, in my recommendation, that this license not be issued. So I strongly urge you to follow the recommendation of the ABLCC and deny the liquor license to Club Addiction. Thank you.
Good evening, Beloit City Council. My name is Patrick Bruce. I'm the Assistant City Attorney, working under City Attorney Krieger. I'd like to just supplement some of the statements made by Chief Sobolski. He said a lot, so I probably don't need to say much, but I'd first like to emphasize the legal standard of review for city councils so that you fully understand it. In the eyes of the law, the city council has an unconstrained ability to either grant or deny a new application for a liquor license. This is because courts don't consider new applicants to have any inherent legal right to the license. It's a privilege for you to grant or deny. Essentially, city council, the municipality, has a police power to regulate the selling of alcohol within the legal, within the local community, and courts will uphold any decision you make tonight, so long as the decision isn't arbitrary, and that, as the chief said, that there's a rational basis to it. And within this rational basis, city council can consider the local public opinion, which is included in the memorandum, the recommendation and advice of the police department, even the statements I make today. But as you deliberate, please keep in mind the standard of review is very broad and gives you the sole discretion in this matter. First, I'd like to also point out that the application is very flawed and disqualifying on its face. If you look at the application on the first page, in bold, it states that an auxiliary questionnaire must be completed and attached identifying, quote, "each member slash manager and agent of an LLC." This is mandated by statute, specifically one twenty-five point zero four, subsection three, subsection, subsection four L. This is statutorily required because the character and fitness of every member or manager and agent of an LLC is appropriate for the consideration of city council in terms of their character and fitness. And this is particularly true when there is seemingly a straw person that the company is putting forth for the true beneficiaries of the license and owners of the company to hide behind. As the chief alluded to, there was a hearing conducted before the ABLCC, and that was the first time that Club Addiction articulated that there was more than just one member to Club Addiction, the LLC, because on the face of the application, only Lilia Wrangle is listed. However, after questioning by committee members, she admitted that Julian and Ephraim Valencia are still very much part of the company. It is improper that it took, in my opinion, questioning from the ABLCC to finally determine that there were at least three members of this LLC, and as such, such an omission is a violation of the law. Second, the applicant, the managing member, the member, Lilia Wrangle, she doesn't identify herself or her role on the application. She simply puts her name there, and then in her auxiliary questionnaire, she describes herself checking the box as a member to a partnership. Well, it's a limited liability company. It's not a partnership. And I just point that out as just another suggestion that Lilia Wrangle isn't a true manager of this LLC, but a straw person that the Valencia brothers are attempting to hide behind and have found her as a friend or somebody to basically take the heat for whatever occurs with the limited liability company and future decisions. This inability to follow simple instruction on the application is compounded by the fact that Club Addiction has also named Lilia Wrangle as the registered agent with the Department of Financial Institutions, and this, again, is unlawful. Section one eighty-three point zero one zero five of the Wisconsin statutes relating to the structure of limited liability companies requires that any registered agent of an LLC reside in the state of Wisconsin, and you can tell from her application, she resides in Illinois, Round Lake. So again, this is just another demonstration, in my opinion, from the city attorney's office, that this is basically a reckless effort on the part of Club Addiction to somehow muscle through a new application and hope that the council members today don't notice that these discrepancies matter. Also, from a legal standpoint, I'd like to point out that the application is disqualified because no license can be issued to habitual law offender. Section one twenty-five point oh four of the Wisconsin State Statutes Regarding General Licensing Requirements for Alcohol Licenses, subsection B states, "No license may be issued to any person who has habitually been a law offender." And in this case, the applicant person is an LLC, which an LLC is included in the definition of person per the statutes. And as the chief described, and maybe some of you have experienced, in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fifteen, the city council heard over seven hours of testimony for various ways that the LLC has violated the law. And just to quickly summarize, the city council heard facts to support that Addiction had been selling alcohol to minors, facts to support that heavily intoxicated patrons were overserved and became disorderly and violent, facts to support that employees were selling alcohol without valid bartender's licenses, and twice, Addiction was found in violation of the tax code by the Department of Revenue and that the club did not appropriately keep records, invoices, and receipts pertaining to its purchase of alcohol and, in fact, purchased alcohol from unlicensed distributors. So courts don't necessarily require convictions for these violations of the law. They just need facts to demonstrate that the violations existed, and in their nature, where in two thousand and thirteen, Addiction was suspended with this license, and then in two thousand and fifteen, the license was revoked. I submit that at those times, council did hear sufficient evidence supporting that the violations occurred. And we heard the name Edgardo Garrido. While Lilia Wrangle is the registered agent for the Department of Financial Institutions, Edgardo Garrido was the appointed agent for purposes of the application. The statute requires that the appointed agent must be, quote, "satisfactory" to the governing authority here, city council, with respect to, quote, "character, record, and reputation," and must also meet the qualifications required of the applicant itself, which again includes that the agent not habitually violate the law. In this case, the police department did its due diligence and ran the traffic record of Edgardo Garrido, and he had been convicted no less of seven times since two thousand and fourteen for the offenses of operating with a suspended license and operating without a license, and currently, his license is suspended. So as the chief alluded to, it's questionable how he's going to lawfully commute from Janesville to Beloit to be there every day and manage it, as he claimed in his supplemental questionnaire. But I submit to council today that this is a blatant disregard for the law and the state statute and the Department of Transportation's attempt to regulate who and should or shouldn't be on the road, and this attitude treats laws as a nuisance, an obstacle to overcome, something to get around, and not what it is in the law, which is the law, something to abide by and respect. And keeping that in mind, Mr. Garrido, as the appointed agent in the application, per statute, is vested with the full authority and control of the premises and conduct of Club Addiction relative to alcohol beverages. So he is the guy, he is the agent of Club Addiction as it pertains to anything alcohol beverage related, and he's been the agent since the beginning of two thousand and fourteen, which would include all the events that led up to the revocation in two thousand and fifteen. So it's no surprise that his nonchalant, careless attitude towards the laws pertaining to whether or not he should be on the road driving translates to his management style, where you heard testimony from the chief, where time and time again, the law was violated and they had issues with events that occurred at Club Addiction. So just in summary, I agree with the chief of police that nothing meaningful has changed in this current application, that the application is deficient in several ways that matter, that the law prohibits the true beneficiaries or owners to a alcohol license from hiding behind a straw person who really has no experience or stake in the game as it pertains to the application of the license. The law prohibits prohibits the issuance of licenses to people or entities that habitually violate the law, which I hope I've explained. The local public opinion, as described in the memorandum, strongly favors denial of the license, and the police department has outlined how the public health and general welfare of this community is better served by denying this license. So there is, in my opinion, a strong rational basis to deny the license, and would ask that in your deliberations that you do that today. Thank you.
Thank you. In all fairness, I would like to see if there's anyone here from Club Addiction that would like to make a comment. No one's here, okay. They're choosing not to. Okay. Okay. So at this time, before I entertain a motion, I want to remind the council that the resolution is in the affirmative. So voting yes means you would approve the license. So I want everyone to be clear as we move forward, voting yes would approve the license since the resolution is in the affirmative. At this time, I would entertain a motion for item seven A, please.
How move we put it to a vote?
Motion by pressure, is there a second?
Seven.
Second by four by council discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second for approval of item seven A. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Fails, seven, zero. Item eight A, please.
Eight A is a proposed ordinance to amend various sections of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to cities, boards, committees, and commissions. This is second reading, and Attorney Krieger is almost back.
Attorney Krieger, please.
This is just the second reading of the ordinance that was meant to adjust the city council president appointments to various boards and committees and commissions. The idea is to make that position optional for several of them, but not make it mandatory. So this is just the second reading. I'll field any questions if anyone has any.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some.
Motion by Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Blakely. Any council comments or concerns or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving item eight A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes, seven, zero. Item nine, please.
Under appointments, the individuals about to be named have been nominated for a seat on a city board, committee, or commission. Each nomination is subject to a confirmation by the city council. Approval of the appointments will be accomplished by one motion unless a council member requests to take up a nomination separately, in which event the nomination will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately. The appointments this evening to the Board of Appeals are incumbent John P. Peterson, incumbent Dustin Gronau, to the Gulf, the Municipal Gulf Committee, Isam Elamin, to Park Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Mike Chiarmida.
You've heard the names, all those in favor of approval of their appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. I mean, this back up. Can I get a motion? I was looking at Council de Forest, I was like, she's gonna make this motion. Is there a motion for approval?
Just trying to halt a sneeze.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by de Forest, is there a second?
Second.
Second by pressure. Now, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes, seven, zero. Madam Clerk, could you read the vacancies? I don't know if you still have that, we have open for the city.
Thank you. There is a vacancy for the Tavern League rep to the Alcohol Beverage License Control Committee, as well as a vacancy for a resident. There's a vacancy for a second alternate to the Board of Appeals, a vacancy for alternate to the Board of Review, a vacancy for a resident to the Equal Opportunities Commission, vacancy for East Side Representative to the Landmarks Commission, one vacancy for a youth representative to the Municipal Gulf Committee, and one vacancy for a resident to the Municipal Library Committee.
Thank you very much, and if they want to apply, they can either call the clerk's office or go online and apply as well.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Item nine. Item ten.
Item ten is councillor activities.
Counsel four back.
Well, I had the great opportunity to attend a meeting today on the Beloit College campus, and when I was at the Chamber of Commerce, I used to talk about areas of excellence in Beloit, and certainly that encompasses Beloit College in every way, but I found out about an even more individual area of excellence at Beloit College today, and that is their archival unit. Their professor of archives, Fred Burwell, spoke today, and I think it's interesting for all of us councillors to know that not only have they, of course, amassed in a wonderful scholarly way all kinds of information about Beloit College and Beloit College alumni, but they have lots and lots of wonderful archived information about the city of Beloit, and I'm hoping that we can make use of this, a great sort of untested area for us and for all of our citizens. It's open to the public, and I'll... And I'm hoping that we can, uh, make use of this, a great sort of untested, um, area, uh, for us and for all of our citizens. Uh, it's open to the public and I'll, I'll try to get some more information, uh, for us to talk about. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Pressil.
Oh, um, I'd just like to remind everybody, this week is a great opportunity to support the Snappers. Today, there's a doubleheader, tomorrow, there's another game, and there's another doubleheader on Wednesday. So you can, those doubleheaders are like getting two for one. So get out and support the Beloit Snappers. Uh, coming up is the farmer's market's been off to a really, really, uh, busy start. First two weeks are like midsummer already. I couldn't believe it. And it's, it's really good to see lots of people coming to town, lots of people have never been here before. And this summer, uh, Discover, uh, Discover Wisconsin TV show will be filming in Beloit. They started last weekend during art walk and they're gonna be filming all summer, different events and everything. They're putting together a show dedicated to, to Beloit. Uh, they've done a couple little snippets in, you know, uh, in the past and specials, but Discover Wisconsin's an independent, uh, film, or independent, uh, production company. And, uh, so this, they'll be working on a feature for Beloit, probably appear next year, uh, in their, you know, and, uh, so they'll be around all, all summer long. Uh, thanks a lot, get out and ride your bike, it's really great. Beloit's better by bike. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I'd like to mention is that, uh, Nancy, Sherry, and I attended a government 101 training up in Madison. I think all three of us would agree that it was incredibly informational and I think it helped us a lot. One thing I'd like to mention is that we actually got to sit next to the newly elected Janesville council people too. So that was really great to have us build that relationship and get to know them, hopefully in hopes of maybe reducing that bitterness we have between those two communities. So that, that's a big thing I think we did last weekend. Uh, this, uh, this week on Thursday, actually, is the little, little free library ribbon cutting at Merrill School. That's gonna be a great thing to do in that community as well. Thank you.
Counsel Blakely.
Oh, I was, Clint stole my thunder. It was a great workshop we attended in Madison. We learned a lot about each other. We learned a lot about communities throughout our state of Wisconsin. And as he said, we got to know our neighbors to the north. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend the Beloit College graduation on Sunday, where 270 students from around the world, around the country, and from Beloit, um, people such as Rose Richard over there graduated. Congratulations to you. And it was really wonderful to see how many people that the college brought to town and how many people of diverse backgrounds end up attending Beloit College. So I too want to mention the notion of, um, the city having more to do with the college. I'm planning to go to the EOC, um, Get to Know You event Saturday morning down in Riverside Park, as Rose introduced us to. And I encourage other people in the community to just stop by and, uh, get to know some people and speak up about what your concerns or interests are in Beloit, or what kind of groups you belong to. And I just wanted to commend all the citizens who came out to the meeting tonight. As someone said, uh, as the mayor of Milton said, this is quite impressive to see people from many different walks of life here across our community, representing themselves and showing, um, how, um, alive and how diverse the face of Beloit is. Thank you very much.
Counsel DeForest.
Thank you. I too am excited, um, that we have individuals that attend Beloit College and fall in love with the community and decide to stay. And so I'm so pleased that Rose Richard had decided to make Beloit her home. Um, and I'm also excited about, uh, some of the recommendations that you've made, things that I've been attempting to champion and bring forth to the council, um, for many years. And I'm hoping that, and we can continue forward with some of those, with some new, uh, counselors here in our midst. Um, you know, I, I actually worked with, uh, Wisdom on a statewide ban the box campaign and it's near and dear to my heart and I would love to see it happen here in Beloit. Um, and I've been working very closely with Community Action, developing more recreational job training, programming for youth. And so I'm really excited about those initiatives and hope that those, uh, continue on. And I, I, like I said, I think we have some rejuvenation, um, among, uh, many people to, to keep that going. So thank you for that. I did want to say that this is a great week, uh, for an opportunity to support our officers. Um, we have the, uh, the Police Department Awards coming up, um, as well as a very important event, which is our Police Memorial, which I've attended every year. I think this is an absolutely critical event as a local elected official that I attend, um, to show my respect and regard for those officers, um, across our state and in our country who have lost their lives, um, in the line of duty. And, uh, it's a very important event. It is this Thursday at one o'clock at the Rotary Center. Um, and I want to acknowledge, um, those men and women that do put their lives on the line for us every day to protect us, um, and how grateful I am to them. I, um, would also like to mention that the Rock River Trail Grand Opening, uh, also near and dear to my heart. Um, the grand opening is happening June 1st at 10:00 AM at the Rotary Center. Um, Beloit is the exact halfway point of the Rock River and, uh, many, many people have worked long and hard to obtain the federal designation for the Rock River as a national water trail. That was an important designation because with that comes access to, um, travel tourism dollars, access to water quality assurance dollars, um, helps more people appreciate the Rock River as the beautiful resource it is so that we can protect it. Um, and a group of us worked for almost two years on submitting that application, um, to obtain that federal designation from the U.S. Park Service. And many people have been working since we received that designation to really develop and encourage its usage. And so, uh, I'm really pleased that we'll be hosting that grand opening, that official grand opening of the, the Rock River National Water Trail. And with that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Duncan.
Am I on Kevin?
You are now.
Okay. On May 3rd, I had the opportunity to attend the Rock County Breakfast with our city manager. Then on May 4th, I welcomed the golfers that participated in the Beloit High School Golf Tournament. There were high school golfers from all over the state. So special thanks to Todd Clary, the instructors, the volunteers, as well as, as well as the Department of Public Works who helped to make that endeavor a success, especially since it was the 37th year for the golf tournament at Kruger and the 90th anniversary of the golf course. What a way to kick it off by having young people to play rounds of golf. Also, in addition to that, I attended the Appointment Review Committee on May 8th and went to listen to the chief give the Beloit Police Community update in the briefing room at the Beloit Police Department on May 10th. Also, I attended the NAACP meeting last week. It was great to hear input from so many community members and citizens of Beloit. We have lots of good things happening in our city. The Hendrix Heart Hospital Public Open House will be on Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon at the hospital. Citizens can get a chance to see the new heart wing and win some giveaways too. So there'll be something for the entire family. Also, I'm excited that our farmer's market is up and running and looking forward to going to that. I'm thankful for the hard work that our staff at the Downtown Beloit Association are putting into it. And it was also great to see so many students here tonight from Beloit High School and also the ladies that came here from Milton. Um, great to have you all here. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple highlights for me. I had the opportunity to attend the Beloit Art Walk, uh, Art Walk the other night, uh, Friday. Uh, a great time to just walk around and see a lot of, uh, people in the downtown area, uh, and what's going on to let people know that Beloit is a great city and, uh, we're doing great things, not only downtown, but in all aspects of the city. But I also had the opportunity to, uh, present at the NAACP, uh, meeting as well. And I, it was a very fruitful conversation. You've heard some of the things that, uh, came out of that meeting, things that we're gonna be partnering and working on together. Uh, ironically, some of the things that when I was campaigning, uh, said some of the things that I wanted to see as well, and then even presented it to the council and city manager. And even the next day, I was on the phone with the city manager, setting up a meeting to discuss some of the things that came out of that meeting. And I've also spoke with, uh, Andrew Yonkey this evening about ways of getting, uh, the word out about jobs for companies that's coming to the city. So, uh, as I said in that meeting, I wanna be a man of action and not of just a man to come and hear what you have to say and then do nothing about it. So I'm already, uh, met with the city manager and we're gonna meet again to discuss ways of, uh, working out some of the, the questions and concerns that we have. I've also spoke with the chiefs as well to make sure that we're all in the director of HR, uh, and things that we're gonna be working on. So I want you to know that as I stated in that meeting, where there's a process in place, things are not gonna change overnight, but I'm encouraged when I see movement. Uh, and I think that's the sentiment that I got out of the meeting that we're, when we, when we see movement, we're happy, uh, that we can't take excuses, we gotta, you know, unapologetically push the button, uh, on issues and may make people uncomfortable at times, not saying that it will, but that's how cities move and that's how cities get better by putting things on the table and let's deal with them. And I've always known Beloit to be able to do that, bring up tough issues and say, now here's the issue, let's deal with it. So I just wanted to let you know that I heard what you said and we're, we're working in that direction. So, uh, with that being said, we're moving to item 11, city manager's presentation. 11A, please.
Is a resolution adopting the City of Beloit logo?
City Manager Luther, please. I'll get to you.
No, we're good. Thank you. So from a historic perspective of most recently, in regard to the logo subject, the council voted on Tuesday, April 18th to endorse the final logo concepts with minor modifications and that those final designs should be brought back as soon as possible. A workshop was held on Monday, May 8th to review those modifications and a consensus, um, appeared to have been reached at that time. Uh, just to provide a little historical information to those who may be newer to the process, um, this formally began in October of 2016. Uh, the city council at that time passed a strategic plan that included a specific goal to create and sustain a positive image, enhance communications, and engage the community. And one of the key initiatives within that goal was the creation of a new City of Beloit branding and logo. One of the biggest challenges we have as an organization is the fact that we have, um, multiple logos being used simultaneously in a variety of departments. And we're seeking one clear, cohesive, forward-looking, modern logo to use for our organization as a whole. Years ago, in 2014, I believe, there was a large community effort, uh, where very large focus groups were engaged and that process, um, cost a total of at least $93,500. And at the end of the day, unfortunately, um, the end result was not something that the city was comfortable endorsing. So the flying bee that it's affectionately referred to from sometime in the mid 90s has continued to be the formal logo, although again, as I stated, um, there are a number of different ones that are being used across, uh, different departments and divisions of the city. So this evening, the council is being asked to consider a final product. Um, the concept of this work was included in a survey and while it's been tightened up and refined, um, there were over a thousand respondents who were engaged in that process to at least provide an opinion. And staff will gladly take the direction of the council in, hopefully, adopting a final logo so we can move forward and work on some more substantive issues. I will fully disclose that this is not my area of expertise and, um, I will be very pleased when we're able to focus our attention on areas that are more of my personal strength, where I feel, uh, a greater ability to provide recommendations and movement, moving forward. Uh, but we did understand this was, uh, something that needed to be accomplished and, again, I'll be happy to implement whatever policy the full council chooses to endorse.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. At this time is, I would entertain a motion, um, approving the adapting of the City of Beloit logo.
I'll move approval.
Motion by DeForest, second by Duncan, council discussion. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I would just like to share that, um, I would like to move forward on more pressing issues that are affecting our city and we certainly need a unified logo. We do have five or six that are floating out there. Um, they're not good for the cohesion and unity of our city. And while all of us might not be in agreement that this is the best logo and we feel really good about it, we need one logo that we can rally around now to move forward. Um, so not that this can't be revisited again in the future, but for now, I, I do think we need, we need one logo, um, so we have some unified face, uh, for the public. So, um, with that said, I'm in support of moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pressil.
Well, I, I, I really, uh, just gonna repeat what I said at the last, uh, in April, it's, I was hoping we'd have a workshop, we'd, we'd engage, give us some revisions and it would look better and it just doesn't look any different. And, um, I'm not sold on this, um, anyway, but you know, there were two parts to this. We didn't waste our money. We did, we got a study, we got, uh, that showed that, you know, we had a flying bee and it was a valid expression of the City of Beloit's, uh, brand and it reflects the river and the water and we've used it for 30 years. And, um, so, the study also suggested that, as we all knew or expected, that we should be evolutionary in, in, in growing the new logo. We should grow something out of what we already have and what people are already used to seeing. We need to improve this and, um, and unify our look. Um, anyway, they've suggested, you know, adding the bridge element, you know, represents a community that builds bridges and is united by them. And I think there's, the value is in the cons, there's value in this concept. And, uh, we shouldn't dismiss that concept just because of some bad art. And unfortunately, that's what I've been seeing and, and I'm not encouraged by it and, um, I can't support this. Um, I think we can do better. I think we deserve better. You know, maybe value for the money. I, maybe Beloit just needs to be Beloit. Maybe we don't need a picture to go with it. Maybe we just need to be like that tree guy in Guardians of the Galaxy. He says, "I am Groot." Maybe all we need to do is say, "We are Beloit." And maybe that, maybe that italicized B that we're all wondering why we keep using it and we just kinda threw it out there because we didn't have any better ideas at the time, maybe that's all we need. Maybe all we need to do is just say, "We are Beloit." And sometime in the future, take this idea, when we have money and time and, you know, things aren't so pressing, maybe revisit this and put this out there for an RFP and say, "Hey artists, what do you got that shows it like this but better?" And then do it then, you know, two years from now. You know, but let's, you know, I, I looked at the brand new Parks truck with the, with the italicized Beloit logo on the side today, in black oddly enough, not even in blue. And I thought, you know, that's fine. That lets people know who we are. There's no, there's no ambiguity, there's no wondering, there's no trying to figure out what it is we are. And if we aren't Beloit, then why are we even bothering being here, you know? Let's just, you know, just let's leave this. Walk away and take the knowledge we gained and say, "It was worth something and I'm sorry this company couldn't provide better art." Maybe it's, maybe we'll learn something from it beyond that. So I'm, I'm not gonna support it and that's pretty much the end of what I'm gonna say about it. Thank, oh, and by the way, everybody that's talked about it, thank you very, very much. It's very encouraging. And, um, I'm sorry we put all, everybody through all this angst. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, just exactly what Councilman Pressil said, I'm, I'm on the same boat too. I can't approve this. You know, we've had too many people complain about it and I know that, you know, it doesn't make a difference what it is, somebody's going to be mad, but we shouldn't have this many people mad at us right now. Uh, the wide range of complaints have been, we wasted all this money, we didn't shop local, which I think is a really big issue to a lot of people in Beloit. And we have people in the City of Beloit that will do this at little to no cost, if not free. Why didn't we shop them? And I know that wasn't an issue that some of us could have done, but I think it's just disappointing that we went this route and I think, just like Pressil said, we do need revisit it someday and we do need a unified logo, but not this one.
Counsel Blakely.
Yes, I, with all due respect, um, I am on now.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Those lights up here, they're hidden. Um, with all due respect to the gentlemen who have spoken to my fellow council members, I am voting for the logo. I know that it may not be perfect, but I feel that we don't have to be perfect in order to, to supply our city with one cohesive, small symbol that can't entirely capture, you know, the diversity, the history, but we can work toward those goals under the one quick symbol, just a shorthand that I believe is handsome looking and modern and we can carry forth from there. We have already spent a considerable amount of money and although budget cannot overrule everything else, I would like to just say, we've spent as much money as we're going to in this go-around, let's vote for it, let's go forward on other important issues in the city. And perhaps further down the road, in a couple years from now, we may want to reconsider something or we may not. But I, I do like the logo and I- want to reconsider something or we may not. But I do like the logo and I support it and I don't wanna see our efforts this time around just come undone, the way the efforts of three years did after an even bigger expenditure of money. So, I say, we've spent it, it is good, it's nearly perfect, and I'm for it. Thank you.
My comment. Thinking about logos, I truly believe that we can continue to push and push and no matter what we come up with, there's gonna be somebody who's unhappy. But we did hold a workshop within the last week that we invited citizens to come to. No one showed up.
We had one.
We had one. So, we did have one. Yeah, so we did have one. I apologize. There were other options that we viewed. In that workshop, we all said, some with some hesitancy, this is what we like. Let's move forward. Let's move forward with this. We went to a vote. I specifically said, "Do we want this on the next agenda item?" The next agenda, because I'm looking around the room and I specifically went one by one purposely to say, "If you, do you like this or don't you like it?"
Can you live with it?
Can you, can you live with it? When I walked, when we walked out of that room, I simply said the question. Am I getting consensus before we put this on the agenda to move this forward? And that's what I received. So, I guess in the future, what I will request that if we're ever in that situation again, in a workshop setting, and the question is asked, I just expect people to be honest. Tell me your true gut feeling. If you hate it, say, "I hate it, I don't want it." We had people in there that was honest and said, "I can live with it. I appreciate that." I really do because that's your honest feeling. What I don't like is being in consensus in one area and coming out publicly and we totally turn the corner and we don't like it. All I'm saying is, if you don't like it, be honest upfront, because then we know what we're dealing with. When I look at a logo, I even know, I talked to Andrew Yonkey today, when I got here and I asked him, Andrew, and I asked him if it's okay if I shared it tonight. I said, "Answer me one question. Businesses that are coming to Beloit, are they saying, 'You know what, we're coming to Beloit because you have a great logo' or we're not coming to Beloit because you don't have a great logo?" To me, and I said this earlier, to me, Beloit consists of the residents that are in the city. Because we can, we can design the best logo in the world, but if you don't have friendly residents, great volunteers, you can have a great logo, but people are still not going to come. We can have this logo here and I truly believe, because we hear it all the time, Beloit is full of great people, friendly people, great volunteers, people who would go there, out of their way to make you feel welcome. They're not looking at it and saying, "That came from a logo." That's coming from the individual. People who will say what they're concerned. Look at the in attendance tonight. All the citizens that's here tonight, they're here because they're concerned. That's, to me, is not coming from a logo. That's coming from within the city itself and that's what we should be promoting and that's what we should be building, the city within itself. Don't get me wrong, a logo is important, but if I wanna put my stock in anything, I'm gonna put my stock in the people and in the city, we heard tonight, for more jobs, more diversity, that's where we're gonna make the difference. That's when people see your logo and come to Beloit, they're gonna say, "This is a great city." It already is. But I don't want us to get caught up in the logo and lose sight of the things that we're doing great already. And I know I said a lot, but as a president of this council, I cannot reiterate enough that one thing that I, I don't even wanna say wish anymore, one thing that I would expect is that we are honest when we have dialogue. Because I need to know where we stand at all times. I need to know that. Because I don't wanna move forward on something and we don't have the support after we said we had the support. Any, Council Preschel?
Yeah, Kevin, I, Kevin, I want, I want you to know that I, I was, I was probably the le, the most hesitant of anybody on the consensus thing during that workshop. But I also want you to know that when I saw what was presented in our packet, it did not match what I remembered from the workshop or what we discussed at the workshop. And therefore, I was not prepared to support it. In fact, I was more convinced than ever that I don't know if this company can deliver what they say they deliver when it comes to the graphic design elements and stuff we're expecting. And I would, again, go back to what you just said. I don't think we need a graphic image in this logo. I think we just need to be Beloit and leave it at that and move on. Move on to the more important things. We got a lot more important things to worry about. Let's just write this off to a learning experience and say, "Good, we're just gonna be Beloit and we're gonna be happy being Beloit and that's what we're gonna be." Let's go.
With that being said, there is a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing now there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approving this, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Can we see it? So, we have two opposed?
I recorded five yes, two no.
Five yes and two no. Passes five to two. Thank you. Item 11B, please.
11B is an update on hiring practices.
City Manager Luther.
Thank you. I am incredibly enthusiastic to talk about this issue at tonight's meeting. We have a brief presentation to share with the audience and our viewers. And I want to start with a conversation about our strategic values. That was my hint for the PowerPoint. And there it is. Perfect. No, I don't need to drive. I'll, I'll ask the chief or Maryann to drive. So, thank you very much.
Voice it as if you need a driver.
Okay, on slide two, we talk about our strategic values. And last year, when we adopted the new strategic plan, we used the word "Beloit" to drive our core organizational values. And I'm not gonna take a great deal of time tonight talking about what each of those values are. The first is to be safe. The second is ethical behavior. The third is leadership at all levels. The O is outstanding public service. The I is for inclusion and we're gonna come back to that. And the T is for teamwork to creatively solve problems. So, these are the core organizational values that are establishing how we work with one another and how we work with people outside our organization. And when we use inclusion, that was really deliberate in that oftentimes you hear the word "diversity" and one of the leaders in our community, I have stolen his phrase in saying, "Diversity happens or doesn't happen. Inclusion takes a specific kind of effort. How are we going to respect the unique contributions of our fellow employees, of citizens and groups and residents and organizations throughout the entire community, seeking out their opinions, their talents, and recognizing their unique needs?" And when we take that as an organizational value and then apply it to our goals, the strategic goal, hint, hint, is to...
Getting like tired.
It is. And this is really, really important and that's why I'm glad it's on the agenda this evening. But the goal in our strategic plan is to create and sustain a high-performing organization, which means a sense of common purpose, constant improvement throughout the organization, tapping into employee talent and innovation, and recognizing leadership at all levels. One of the key objectives within that goal is to recruit and retain a diverse workforce within our organization that reflects the community we serve. And we've heard so many comments tonight about that. And a key initiative within that objective, within the goal that supports the values, it's all aligned, is through the use, in particular, of police and fire assessment and recruitment teams, filling our openings with competent and diverse individuals. And the reason I lay out all of this is because we have some statistics to share to show you what our hiring practices have resulted in over the course of, one is a historical perspective prior to my arrival almost two years ago. We're looking at the city as a whole and we're also focusing on the police department because we have had the majority of full-time vacancies occurring in the police department. There's been a great deal of transition and motion within those positions. We recognize that there is a lack of diversity in our fire department. We've had very little turnover in the fire department. But we are already strategizing new approaches and new ways of bringing in a more diverse candidate pool. And we're gonna talk about some of those ideas and we're gonna share the results that we've been able to enjoy. Because I think it's wonderful to have a plan in place. It's even better to have results that demonstrate where we're successful or where we need to continue to adjust. And although we're seeing improvements, I can tell you, speaking as the chief executive officer of this organization, it is a personal initiative of mine to ensure that this organization does indeed reflect the population that we serve. And we do it in ways that are appropriate and that are inclusive of our community and that help us find new ways of seeking out candidates so that we can have more robust pools of those candidates. So, with that, very quick overview on a subject I'm very passionate about, I'm gonna ask Maryann Marshall to talk with us a little bit about our statistics on annual comparisons and how we're doing with our new hires as a city as a whole. And the police chief will also share feedback about the results that we're seeing in his department. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I don't think all of you know me. My name is Maryann Marshall. I'm the director of HR and it's been a pleasure for the last two years. As the, could you go back to the, thank you? All right. As you can see from our numbers, what we're trying to do is ultimately, we feel very strongly that our city staff should reflect the population of Beloit. And as you can see from the new hired numbers that we have put up there, we still have a ways to go. So, we do recognize that. But in order for us, we know where we wanna go, but we have to determine right now where we're at and where historically we've been at. So, that is why we're tonight presenting the new hires and later on in the summer, we will bring you back numbers as far as the city as a whole, as well as our seasonal process. You keep flipping. Okay, so as you can see, we went all the way back to 2014, 2015, 2016 and where we are as of 5/30 of this year. And as you can see, that we do, we still are lacking in several areas. We are constantly looking for new ways to reach out to the community. If anybody ever has any suggestions, we are very open to them. We have a, we, I did a little bit of study today even with the seasonal applications. We had six postings for our seasonals and unfortunately, we only have 120 applications for six different segments. So, obviously, the mode of us reaching out, we're not getting where we need to be. So, we need to, again, strive for new and alternative ways. So, again, anybody has any suggestions, please bring them forward. We have started in the last six months, what we call an affirmative action outreach. And it's basically an email blast and I have some wonderful people in the community here who are very helpful in getting our word of our opportunities out to the citizens. However, that committee needs, those email addresses, I need that to grow in numbers. The more people I can reach out to, the better, the more response we're going to get. So, I'm going to ask for help in that. Just to do, just to let you know, we try to be very respectful of our advertising dollars. The Beloit Daily News is very, very supportive in helping me out with that, as well as the gentleman from the Chronicle. They're very respectful and they do understand the restraints. However, that is not the only means that we're reaching out for. We do a lot of free recruiting through different colleges throughout the area. We also are doing some additional outreach with some community programs with some different diverse populations. A lot of it is training people. For instance, we will have a young lady start in the Human Resource Department on Tuesday, who is with the Workforce Development, Wisconsin, the state of Wisconsin. She has a slight disability. So, again, we're constantly looking for new avenues. But as you can tell from, from the numbers, we still have a ways to go. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Thank you. I guess, I was hoping for more substantive information about the new strategies we're using to try to broaden our candidate pool. Can I assume that's gonna be coming to us? I have provided lots of suggestions of things that I think we should do and would like to see. I don't know if any of those have been implemented. I, I am concerned about the seasonal pool. I'm gonna be really frank and I've been really upfront, honest with, about this with our city manager, that I've been disturbed by the trend and it seems like a lot of our seasonal hires are the sons and daughters of current city employees and then by that nature, most of them are Caucasian. And I've asked that we specifically address that.
We are actually do, looking at the seasonal pool as we speak. I have heard that as well from, Mark has shared that information with me. But until I actually dive into the data to see who is being hired and, you know, is there a relationship, I can't stand, stand in front of, that's the perception out there. I don't know if that's the reality. Again, that's the perception and I have to do a study. But our seasonal hiring will not be concluded until June. So, that is why I was unable to provide that information to you.
Right. So, we have some very specific information about what we're doing in recruiting with the police department that the chief's gonna touch on. Again, that has been our area of focus because that's where we have the most full-time positions that have been open and where we have known there is difficulty in always getting a pool of candidates that are as diverse as we want it to be. So, we have some very specific strategies that have been implemented for that. Where our intent is to use similar strategies for the fire department. We think there are some unique factors, but there are also some parallels. In regard to seasonal hiring, in case there's any misinformation, we post all of our positions and we go to a number of workfairs and partnered with Beloit Memorial High School very recently and with Career Tech as well. And they intentionally were looking for students who were having difficulty finding placement. And so, we made a very proactive effort to work with them for any openings for summer help. Once we have the numbers from this summer, we will able, we will be able to tell you definitively the kinds of information I think you're seeking about our current seasonal pool, which will drive what we change for next summer.
And just to let you know, the seasonal positions were posted on March the 10th. And as of today, you know, I went through and did a count, we only received 116 applications, which is concerning. Now, I need to figure out why, why am I only receiving this and where are they coming from? So, that's, that's what I need to dive into.
So, is that application period closed at this time?
They are open until June the 1st. One thing that we will be doing with our seasonal managers is that we will be starting the process earlier. So, we will, for instance, we actually have a meeting next week to discuss the rates and increases. We will be meeting with them in early fall. What are our needs? What do we need to do? Then we can start, start letting people know, this is where we're expecting some openings. This is how to apply. We need to do a better job of that.
Okay. And then, I'm, is it okay if I keep asking my questions? I'm glad that we're gonna hear about some of the strategies that Chief Sabolski is using and that will be mirroring some of those successful ones with the fire department. But I'm still concerned about the rest of the city. So, are you gonna come to us with a, a plan of what specific strategies you're gonna implement for other positions in the city?
Right. We will be bringing that information later, in the later, late summer.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I just wanted to mention that I was happy that you, that to see this on the agenda, because I was going to ask you about that as we got to close the seasonal hiring process here to see how it shook out and see what the data reflected because...
Well, you brought that, yeah, you did bring that up to me. So, I have, it's, I've been looking at the numbers and the names coming across the desk.
I know you were brand-new at the time, but...
Right. And, and just to let you know, is that I actually have taken a very active role with the seasonal process, because again, I have to be immersed in it in order to find out, you know, what's going on, is, what barriers are out there? What do we need to do to make it more efficient? What barriers are out there? What do we need to do to make it more efficient, to make it easier on people to apply?
You're saying about the 116 applicants that you've got
That's very disappointing.
That's the small number that you would not, you expect to be much larger. By what, a factor of two or three?
Yes. Yeah. I have to be honest with you, I was a little shocked. I was very disappointed with the number of applications. So I don't know if, and again, I have to find out, is it that the application is cumbersome? You know, is it that I'm not reaching the people? And again, until I'm actually immersed in the process, you need to find those. That's the way you discover it.
So in interest of time tonight, we have, I mean, a laundry list of changes that have been implemented into our recruiting efforts and the way that we're building relationships with a number of organizations across the city in order to have both formal and informal ways in which individuals are finding out about jobs that are open. The other reality is that we have had a soft hiring freeze in place. So outside of police officers and firefighters and our seasonal work, we have not been doing a great deal of hiring. And so it's because of our budgetary constraints and trying to retain those personnel dollars, that does create some other limitations in that we don't have as many positions to fill as we have had historically. But that said, this is a very high priority. And again, we are not doing business as usual and are implementing new strategies. And they're oftentimes position-specific in knowing what those particular skill sets are that are required and how can we go about finding qualified candidates that are also diverse pool of candidates and using those specific nuances in consideration as we seek those out. We'll talk about the police department here just in a second. But something very important that was said earlier is understanding barriers that may not be well-understood by staff. How a job description is written, how a job posting is written, where you have to access those particular postings, and how you submit an application. All of those things can become barriers if we're not sensitive to potential impact. So we are very open to getting constructive criticism or some guidance on any issues that might be raised. I think we've been very responsive to those and have been very adaptive in our hiring process when we have had positions to fill. That's the only way that we'll improve. We have seen some movement in the right area, particularly in the police department, but that is not enough in and of itself. This is a constant process that we're going to be seeking to improve upon year after year.
Counsel Foreb, did you have anything? Counsel DeForest?
Thank you. Can I just ask real quick? Is there one place on our city website at least where all of our positions are posted?
There is. It is on
Where is that?
If you go to, I'm sorry, I don't have the computer in front of me.
It's on the employment link. It's right in the middle of that.
So it's a link on the main page?
On the main page, yes.
It's a very short page, very easy to read.
Okay, and the seasonal positions?
The seasonal positions are also posted on there.
All right. So I want to make sure the public knows and will be spreading the word that there's a link right on the main page. They click on it. It lists all of the positions available. And then the application is there as well?
You go down the list, you go down the
The postings?
The posting, and there's a blue apply button.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Could we go back to that PowerPoint, please? So just, I guess, to kind of go over some of the things we've done in the police department, we have had significant organizational change, both in terms of personnel, but also in terms of structure and mission. Mr. Williams mentioned earlier the position descriptions. We've looked at all those, but I also started by looking at process over a year and a half ago and what in our process is preventing our ability to get qualified diverse candidates into our department. So one of the first things that was done is, in concert with establishing a bona fide assessment and recruitment team, we eliminated the academy requirement. So previously, if you hadn't gone through the State Department of Justice, Training Standards Bureau, Police Academy, you weren't considered for hire. That left out a lot of diverse applicants because there is a cost to that. And the cost of that has actually increased over the last couple of years because the hours in the academy have increased appropriately to 720 hours. We want our officers to have the necessary training, but with that comes additional cost if you are putting yourself through the academy. And previously, that was what would be required for you to even make it through the applicant door. So I think that was the first big hurdle. We reduced our upfront credit requirements down to 40. The state, by law, you have to have 60 within five years of employment. So we're at the 40 level for application, which is, you know, that 20 is a struggle for someone new to law enforcement, working adverse hours, family, et cetera. So we tried to reduce that a little bit to help get in more applicants. And then along with our assessment and recruitment team, we really ramped up regular, persistent, perpetual recruiting efforts and not only established relationships, but we are out across Wisconsin. We identified a very good partner in Western Illinois University who has a very diverse criminal justice program. And we've had, in terms of relationship building, really great success. We've hired two folks out of Western Illinois University, one minority candidate. But we've had many, many minority applicants go through the process. And so to further it, we actually sent our team down there to their university where we do our written and physical test, one day at their place. So we would do it here locally. We also will go down and did it. We did about six recruitments in the last year and a half. We also did all of them down in Western Illinois. A lot of those applicants were diverse applicants, but many of them were still at a certain point in their education. They were a junior or going to be a senior the next year, sophomore. So they took the test and the written just to, I think, get a feel for it and be comfortable with it and build a relationship with our department. But then they really didn't follow through because they decided they wanted to complete their four-year degree before they got this job. Now, the one applicant that we did grab, he was a junior and he's going to finish online. He made arrangements, made the decision he's going with the job, but not everyone decides that. And so that's an appropriate decision. So I really feel like we have a ready pipeline there at Western Illinois that as these folks get further along, we're going to be grabbing them. Part of our assessment and recruitment team efforts were bolstered by Western Illinois people that we hired. We took them down and helped with recruitment at their career fairs. We're using them at our community events to assist with diverse hiring as well. You know, the long-term aspects of diversifying your department, and the city manager is correct, this is a long-term project. If you look at the police department, and I think the fire department is similar, you can see that 15, 20 years ago, there was a large pool of diverse candidates that were hired, probably during the 90s when there was a lot of public money available to hire folks. But that were the oversight or we didn't close the loop here is that we didn't sustain that. And so to sustain diverse organizations, you have to think about not only hiring, but promotion, retention, mentoring, all those things. And that's part of our organizational change in the police department in bringing in our shift commander positions and promoting diverse candidates within our department and grabbing diverse candidates outside of our department and bringing them in is that we're not only looking at our new cops, but we're also trying to create that nucleus of diverse leaders in the department that are going to help the next generation. And we're going to, by virtue of that, attract more diverse candidates. So I think it's, you know, that's a piece that takes a little while to start rolling out and for people to start noticing and paying attention to. But I think just our experience at Western Illinois has been very positive from that perspective. And we've got a lot of good future prospects there. In terms of our numbers, you can see where we've gone really in, since January of 16. That's really a significant amount of hiring. Thirty-six percent of our sworn officers are on probation. Twenty-nine percent of our sworn force is on probation. So it's a young department, and so
For the viewers who may think that probation has some kind of disciplinary connotation, that's simply the status that a new person is in until they have been here long enough to successfully no longer be on probation. Just to make that clear.
Appreciate that. Yes, not evil probation. Development probation, okay? So we have a very young force out there at many levels, all the way up through the rank of lieutenant in terms of experience and that type of thing. So that, you know, that's going to build upon itself as we continue with the organizational structure and cultural changes. I guess I'll just open up to any questions. Yes?
I just want to compliment you. I saw that there were some police down at the art walk. And then also, there were three police walking around when I was at a booth at the farmer's market. And, you know, just like the kids are so thrilled to see them and everybody was giving high fives. I just, I think that's a wonderful thing you're doing. And actually, they look like they were enjoying it too.
Having fun, yeah.
Counsel DeForest?
Thank you. I'm thrilled about the partnership with Western Illinois University. Thank you for your proactiveness. I didn't know that we were doing testing and the physical test on site. That's wonderful that we're going right to them and really making it as easy as possible. It sounds like we will have, hopefully, some individuals interested in coming to our community in the near future. I would also like to ask that we continue to explore ways to reach out to our local young people to really get them in the pipeline as well, that we figure out ways to connect with the high school and with Blackhawk Tech, maybe serve as a bridge between the two to really help some of our local youth get into our force as well.
I agree. And actually, one of our new lieutenants is the current Blackhawk Tech Academy Director. But we've had a very good relationship with them, participated in a number of cultural events with them and their academy activities. In terms of the high school, I'm actually going to be there in about a week addressing their criminal justice class. And so we're making a lot of inroads there. Our SROs are, in a sense, ambassadors as well. But yeah, no, I think we're, I agree with all that. We're continuing to try to grow those relationships. And the local recruitment, I think, is where we're somewhat lacking. And again, I think that's part of the, it takes a little time for some folks in certain areas of the city to have a good feeling about the police department again and see it as an organization that they want to join and be a part of.
Good. I know that some municipalities, I don't know if this would work here, but they have kind of like a, I don't know what to call them, but I guess kind of like a youth ambassador SRO, you know, aspiring police officers right in the high school. It's a club. They help out the SROs at community events. I mean, is that something that we could more formalize?
We actually are doing that. That's a police explorer program.
Oh, that's what it's called, yes.
So the soon-to-be Lieutenant Sales has already been assigned the task of youth programs. And we're working on midnight basketball. We're working on a number of initiatives. And many of these new leaders, we're going to be assigned these projects to work on so that things actually get to fruition.
Okay. And then so to take that next leap, that's fantastic. Thank you. And I'm so pleased to hear that Sales will be heading that up. Could we look into assisting these young people that are prospects with tuition at Police Academy? With, you know, getting those credits they need to be in our candidate pool? Could we be creative about working with businesses to help make that next leap?
Well, admirable thought, but if they go through our process and we select them, we pay to send them through the academy now. So they're employees, so
We're paying 100% of it now. We weren't before.
I know, and I know that. And they need credits though still under their belt to apply.
Credits, right.
Right. So could we, that costs money. So can we be creative about how we help those? So for example, the school district's working on helping aspiring teachers pay for their tuition with a commitment that they'll consider coming back to teach for us. Could we do something like that?
That's outside of my venue. I would say this, though, that investing in someone we know nothing about is not necessarily going to pay off in the end because we go through a stringent process now. If you get through the process, which we are making every effort to get folks through, meaning you have the character and competence to join the police department, we're paying for all of that. You know, I can't change the state law in terms of 60. The police department doesn't have any budgetary means to support persons in general to go and get 40 credits.
Could we partner with businesses to do that, maybe?
One thing, I don't know if it's for the initial 40 credits that you need to be eligible. That's one factor. The 20s that are needed after that, they're gainfully employed by us as far as their ability to reach that final goal.
And they do get, there's a salary incentive for having the degree once you attain your degree.
Right.
I think we're doing a lot on that, although we can look at other options. I think that might be a little more difficult.
And I don't want this to sound like criticism. I appreciate all that you're doing. It's fantastic. I just want to keep moving, keep going.
I think the police explorer program is going to be a very good inroad into grabbing high school youth and bringing them in. Maybe there's something that we can do there once that program gets rolling.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Seeing that, I would like to thank you for the presentation and to the
I'm sorry, sir?
You have more?
I have one other piece of information I had to provide you with. I was asked about the military tribute information, and I just wanted to pass along that since March 7, there have been eight in the city of Beloit that have occurred without issue. We have a very good understanding and relationship with the VFW folks. It's been seamless, no problems at all under the existing structure and agreed-upon process. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. So that's as of today.
Thank you. So just in summary, once again, thanks for the presentation. But to the city manager, to the Mary Ann, also to the chiefs, I think you kind of hear where the council is kind of saying how important this is for us to make sure that we have forces and the city represents the, and we talked earlier, the population in which we exist. And I think you're hearing it down here from everyone about how important it is. So the progress that we're making, we want to encourage you to keep moving forward, but continue to head in that direction. So, thank you. Item 12. There's no reports from boards and city officers. Item 13, is there a motion to adjourn? Are those in favor of adjournment? And we're on our way upstairs to a final meeting, so.